Good evening. Welcome to the Town of Herndon Public Session, February 26, 2019.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome. It's nice to see you here. I'll call the meeting to order and ask you to please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilmember Baker asked me to let you know that she's out of town on business and will not be here this evening. We do have a couple of sets of amendments up for approval. Is there a motion to approve the February 12th public hearing minutes?
So moved.
I'll second.
Discussion on the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and those opposed. Okay. And is there a motion to approve the February 19th work session minutes?
So moved. Second.
Discussion on the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and those opposed. All right, thank you very much. We have one, I think just one, presentation this evening. It's a proclamation to recognize Women's History Month, March 2019, and I'll recognize the Vice Mayor to read our proclamation. Madam Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There we go. This is a Town of Herndon Proclamation Recognizing Women's History Month, March 2019. In 1981, the National Women's History Project, or the NWHP, an educational nonprofit organization that recognizes and celebrates the accomplishments of women, petitioned the United States Congress to declare National Women's History Week, which was celebrated for the next several years. Six years later, the NWHP successfully petitioned the Congress to expand the celebration of women's history for the whole month of March. From that point forward, March has been designated as Women's History Month across the country to recognize the countless recorded and unrecorded contributions that women from every race, ethnic background have made to grow and strengthen our nation. As the Town of Herndon celebrates Women's History Month, we remember that throughout history, women have demonstrated understanding of leadership in areas of business, government, law, science, medicine, the arts, education, and many other fields, and have comprised a significant portion of the labor force, working both inside and outside of the home. Women have been instrumental during times of war, serving in our nation's armed forces to defend the United States, and have taken an important role in serving our communities, particularly throughout volunteerism and in the establishment of charitable and philanthropic and cultural institutions. Therefore, the Mayor and the Town Council of the Town of Herndon hereby proclaim the month of March 2019 as Women's History Month in the Town of Herndon, together with this year's theme, visionary women, champions of peace and nonviolence, to honor women who have led efforts to end war, violence, injustice, and pioneered the use of nonviolence to change society. Furthermore, the Mayor and Town Council of the Town of Herndon, Virginia hereby call on citizens of the town to observe March as Women's History Month with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Comments from the council?
Yes.
Madam Vice Mayor.
I see some of my colleagues from Rotary are here, and they are some of those pioneers. I see the first president, female president that Rotary ever had, Ms. Pat Williams is with us, and the first female president after I joined Rotary, Ms. Mary Drum, and I'm thrilled to continue my membership with Rotary with them, as well as some other Rotarians that I see here in the audience. I used to get excited as a child, growing up in Alabama, when we would talk about two women that I thought a lot of, and they were Rosa Parks, that I brought up earlier in the month for Black History Month, but I just thought Rosa Parks was some kind of woman, that she just was not going to get up and give up her seat for a peaceful demonstration for civil rights. And the other was a lady that was another native from Alabama. This was during Alabama History Month. We would study this. Helen Keller. When she was less than two years old, she contracted, they think maybe scarlet fever or meningitis, left her deaf, she didn't learn to speak, and blind. And so she had to figure it all out, and then fortunately, this other pioneering woman, Annie Sullivan, showed up to help bring her out of that darkness, and she went on to live a pretty fulfilled life and became an author. And if you don't know who she is, I know who she is, because she was in the next town over, and we always went to visit her birthplace. But also, if you'll take a look at our council here, we have quite a few women, and when I first moved to Herndon, you might have one, maybe two women. So we've come into our own, and please recognize all the strong women you know, including your moms, or aunts, or just the lady next door that helped bring you up. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. And a few years later, Alabama produced Sheila Olin, so she's in esteemed company. More comments from the council. Mr. McKenna, followed by Ms. Friedrichs.
Just real quick, this is always a great proclamation, because it matters so much, and I just find it amazing that the Congress didn't pass women's suffragists or the women's right to vote. It's going to be 100 years this year, and it became a constitutional amendment, the 19th amendment, in 1920. And to go from not having the right to vote to being on the dais, making decisions, is a long way for sure, but we have far more to go, and we have to work together to make that happen. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Friedrichs.
Thank you. So I want to thank the founders of Rowan Tree, who have come tonight. Ladies, they have founded a coworking space for women over in the Office Park, over by We're Brothers and all those great businesses. I also want to thank the former presidents of Rotary who were women, and also members of Rotary who are here, who are women, including Danielle Scherf, Marlene Dorfey, and, let's see, who else do I see in there? And Pat Williams, and Mary Drum. These clubs and women in business work together to make our community more caring, prosperous, and supportive through their fundraising, volunteership, and business acumen. I encourage residents to take the opportunity to educate themselves about women's history. And like our Vice Mayor, I wanted to mention, this is also the last week of Black History Month, and I wanted to highlight an African-American woman that I heard about on NPR. I hadn't known her name, but I didn't know much about her, Ida B. Wells, who was born into slavery in 1962. She was an anti-lynching activist, a journalist, a founding member of the NAACP, and she was supported in her work by Frederick Douglass, another man who was born into slavery. I encourage you to learn more about Ida B. Wells and other amazing women who've been able to achieve much despite the odds against them, and I thank you all for coming out tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Dagga.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think my mom raised me right, because I always grew up thinking women were in charge. So for me, it was difficult to go into environments where that wasn't the case. So I fully support this, and we should do this more often. Thank you.
Thank you. Go, Mom. Yes, sir. Mr. DeKalb.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Hello, everyone. It's a great proclamation, for sure, and I can tell you that the contribution of women in anything, literature, art, history, any place you go, is humongous. And also, I can see some of our visionary ladies from Herndon here, some entrepreneurs, some visionary people, and some community members, thank you for coming here, and this is a great proclamation. I have always heard about, you know, two women when I was growing up, Mother Teresa and Florence Nightingale, and the impact they created in the world. When I was in school, we used to always read about their story, and that used to fascinate me, still it does. And just two examples I give you, but there are like millions of examples that, you know, ladies have impacted in the world. So congratulations. And myself, I was raised by a single mom, so I can understand, I concur with Council Member Delaguela, that I was under the impression that, you know, and still I'm under the impression that ladies rule the world. So kudos to all the ladies. Thank you.
Yeah, well, Beyonce says that, it must be true, right? Thank you for all your comments. I appreciate it, everyone. I want, I concur with my colleagues, everything that I have written down's already been said, so thank you for that. Senator Boyceco had contacted me this afternoon and asked me to convey her regrets for not being here this evening. She very much wanted to participate. However, she had a conflict in her schedule. They're just finally back from Richmond after a very interesting session. She wanted me to share that she honors all women who've pioneered to change society, and that she too asks all individuals to observe March as Women's History Month with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities. So thank you to President Boyceco for that. With that, I would like to invite down for the presentation, the entire Town Council, the Town Manager, Town Attorney, all of our representatives from the Rotary Club who are here, our Rowan Tree founders, who are just doing great things, and I see some other women entrepreneurs out there. If you'd like to come down and join us for the presentation, we would welcome you.
I think Mary Drum is.
I'm going to double the guy. Because they're towards me, so that's good.
Double row.
They're going to be over here, so just do a double row.
Do a double row.
Everybody look at me.
Okay.
I'm going to sit here.
I'm going to go.
I'm going to turn around.
Okay, big smiles.
One more.
All right, everybody, look at.
We love to hear from people.
Yeah.
And you don't have to wait.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm Kate Vigiano Janich, and this is my co-founder and best friend, Amy Degliano, and we're the co-founders of Rowan Tree. But actually, we're so excited to be here, because we are actually organizing for March 8th, we're working with Turning Point Suffragist Memorial. They're working on fundraising to build a memorial to those suffragists to be built in 2020. So we actually at Rowan Tree on March 8th, on International Women's Day, are hosting a fundraiser where Pat Worth of the organization will be giving a really great presentation. We'll have chocolate fondue, I'm just saying. But it is a fundraiser, and also an event where we'll learn, I think, a lot that we don't even know. I think a lot of us take so much of this for granted, what we have now. So we're really happy and excited to organize this and host on March 8th. So we will send out that information. We're all over Facebook, but it is at March 8th, at what time, Amy?
5:30.
Yeah, 5:30 to 7:30. Should be really lovely, and we hope to see you all there. So thank you so much, and thank you, everybody, too.
Thank you.
I'm Pat Williams. I'd just like to add to that, thank you, Bill, for bringing up the Women's Suffragist Memorial. I would just like to add, even though I'm representing Rotary tonight, that the suffragist actual event, opening the memorial out at Lorton, will be taking place in August, and everyone, all the women and men too, are going to be invited to come and hear the amazing, amazing stories.
Thank you. Nope. Okay. Thank you all for coming. It's a delight to honor you this evening. That brings us to comments. Mr. Town Manager, do you have any comments for us?
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you. Just wanted to give a quick update on downtown redevelopment and where we stand. Staff is wrapping up its, has wrapped up its review of the fourth submission of the site plan that we've worked with Comstock on for these many months. For those that don't understand, a site plan is a very detailed engineering zoning review of the property and how it will work, and it's, like I said, a lot of detailed engineering sheets that we have to go through and pore over, and the comments have gone from many, many, down to just a handful. We are preparing to send those handful back to Comstock in the next couple of days. They have been already made aware. I've talked to Dave Zeponi in the past day. We're moving closer in LOI and art space. We've done some work on that in the past few days as well. And just to remind you that we have two roles in this deal. One is a governmental role, which that's the site plan, and we also have a proprietary role. We are a landowner that will be in partnership with them once this development occurs, and we have a series of proprietary comments on Comstock's site plan that we also are working through with Comstock right now as the joint partner and landowner. So we're moving forward. We're hoping to get the site plan wrapped up soon, and then we would then move from there on to the HPRB after that point. But again, it's something we work on diligently, but it's again, deep in the staff weeds right now, but hopefully, something will bubble forward here shortly. Thank you.
Thank you for the update. Mr. Dekalb, do you have any comments for us?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I want to share two things. First thing is, I attended Herndon Youth Advisory Council's meeting. Councilmember McKenna invited me there, and I went there. I came here, actually, not there. I came here and I thoroughly enjoyed, you know, sharing my story and encouraging the youth. So that was a great moment. Another thing is, as you may already know, but I wanted to share here, there is a conference going on, on 2019 Shape of the Reason Conference, it is called, and it's going to be on Thursday, March 7, and it is organized by Northern Virginia Chamber of Commerce, Regional Commission, and Northern Virginia Technology Council. The theme is the Business Case for Economic Mobility. So I think it's going to be a great moment to learn a lot of things, how the technology is changing Northern Virginia's future, and also, you know, how we get impacted, and how can we better prepare ourselves, you know, with these different changes here. So I am definitely going there and participating and learning a lot, and sharing as well. And I just encourage everybody to go there. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Delaguela.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Just wanted to bring some folks up to, on some of the things we discussed. If you didn't get a chance to listen to the recording at the work session, we discussed a code of conduct for the council. I think that's a good step in the right direction. We'll be hearing more of that. We didn't hear a lot back from people regarding the budget. We discussed that. Please don't let us make those decisions in an echo chamber. So we all have our initiatives and priorities, but at the public hearings, we really need to hear from you folks. The last thing is, I had a meeting with the Dulles Area Transportation Authority. I really like the energy that's being focused there, to focus on a segment of the population doesn't necessarily have a voice, or is sometimes left out of these considerations. So I think Herndon's moving in the right direction. So thank you.
Great. Thank you. Mr. McKenna.
Yeah, just to echo what Mr. Dekalb said, the Herndon Youth Advisory Council, their meeting last week, and thank you very much for being there. Your speech and discussion was very motivating. I know one of our members on KID is Nepalese, so he was very proud that you indeed, you know, represented, you know, talking about you being only the fourth person of Nepalese descent that's actually elected. So that was a really good discussion, and really truly appreciate that. That's all I have.
Thank you. Ms. Friedrichs.
Thank you. I would like to, as Councilmember Delaguela mentioned, encourage residents to speak to us about the budget. Want to remind you all that on Saturday this week, this Saturday, from 9:00 to 11:00, most of us up here on the dais will be in the entrance area of the Herndon Municipal Center to talk to you. We're all going to be separated. You'll be talking to us one-on-one. So I hope you'll take the opportunity to tell us the things that concern you, particularly about the budget, but anything else that's of concern to you. Also wanted to mention that I had the opportunity to attend the task force, the Fairfax County Task Force on Affordable Housing, which also meets on a Tuesday, but they were, they had to reschedule because of the snowstorm. So the head of our planning commission, Melissa Jonas, is also the head of this task force. And I want to reassure everybody who's concerned about affordable housing, that your council and your planning commission are paying attention. We're trying to make sure that affordable housing is taken care of, and that we don't get rid of the inventory that we currently have. We want to expand instead. I also want to thank crews who plowed us out in last week's snowstorm. There were some glitches, but I know it was cold, and I know it was a gross day, and I really appreciate people coming out. Also, thank you to the trash pickup crew. We could not do it without you. Thanks.
Absolutely. Madam Vice Mayor.
Thank you. So I got the evening started with my colleague on council, attending a grand opening of PM Pediatrics, which is on the Herndon Parkway. It's by the Potbelly Sandwich, close to where the Giant used to be. So if you have children under, I guess, 15, 16, this is a great place to go, instead of having to go to an emergency room, so you may want to check it out, and it's absolutely gorgeous on the inside. So you don't need an appointment, you could even call in, and they're open till midnight, 365 days a year. So for everyone with children, or if you're babysitting your grandkids, that's a great resource to have in the community. I'm also looking forward to the roundtable that we're going to have, the community meeting on Saturday. I hope some of you will be there. If you can't make it for some reason, remember, your Town Council is the most accessible group of elected officials you've got. You can find us in the grocery stores, the coffee shops, the restaurants. Even better, call us up and have an appointment or a phone call. So otherwise, how do we know what you're thinking? And I really do enjoy speaking to people. Also want to do a shout-out to DPW for everything they did last week. It was hectic. And St. Patty's Day is coming up in February, so be safe. Make sure you have a designated driver, or take a cab. And I think that's it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. I appreciate that you guys were able to go to the ribbon-cutting at PM Pediatrics, because, boy, I wish that had been around when my kids were younger. Tuesdays are not only Town Council night, it's the night that track and two different soccer practices and two different sides of the town are happening. So that's what I was doing. So thank you for representing us. I appreciate that. And to echo the comments of my colleagues about comments on the budget, we welcome hearing from you. At every public hearing during the comments from the audience is an opportunity for that. You can also email us, call us. We don't want you to feel like you have to wait until the public hearings start in April. We're listening to your recommendations now, and the Town Manager is preparing the draft budget that will come out on April 1st, which I find hilarious, that our budget comes out on April Fool's Day every year. But that's when the draft will be there, and then we want to continue to hear comments from you. We'll have at least two public hearings in April and possibly beyond. So just want to make sure that you know to hear from us, or to come and let us know what you're thinking. And that is all that I had that hadn't totally already been said. So this is the opportunity for comments from the audience. This is a time to come forward, to speak on any item that is not listed as one of our public hearing items. This does include our consent agenda or any other item that is of a concern to you. So I would invite you to come forward, state your name and address for the record, and when the red light comes on, you have up to three minutes. You can, you need to wrap up when you see the red light. Thank you, ma'am. Good evening.
My name is Barbara Owlsley. I live here in the Herndon, resident, 2101 High Court Lane, Herndon, Virginia, at the Royal Gate condominium area. And the reason I'm here this evening, I have a concern, after reading the zoning restrictions and limitation of animals. And living in a condominium or apartment or townhomes, I know that we have homeowners associations, that they have a limit of two, but when you have people who are bringing in more than two over your head, and in a confined area, like maybe 1,200 or 1,800 square feet, that is not enough for five or six animals. And they can be, doesn't matter what type animals they are, there's dogs, canines, but it doesn't matter whether it's a rottweiler or what, that's just too many animals to be kind. And I find that Herndon does not have anything in their ordinance except for potbelly pigs and chickens. And with Fairfax County, they have a number of things in their ordinance. The only thing that I suggested to them, the way they have it, the square footage, the people think it's the whole lot, and not the individual dwelling. They think they can put all these animals on this 22,000 square foot, and that's not how it's done. So they're going to change that, they said. But I do need, and I know that your schedules are very busy, and I hope that you would take this as priority, top priority, and I did send emails to some of you, and I do have copies, if you don't have Fairfax County information, as well as my letter in the Section 2512 in reference to limitations. It needs to be included, because we are a growing community, and there's a lot of animal lovers here, and we all are animal lovers, but there has to be a limit, especially when you're getting confined, and the homes are, the noise back and forth, you sound like we're at the racetracks. And then the dogs are scratching, and you hear that. And the building that I am, which is built by Charles E. Smith, and that was an issue in reference to them properly doing the installation and the flooring and adjusting of the floorboards to the ceiling. So that's another issue. But that was brought some years ago, but that's what I wanted to present tonight, that we need to put a zoning ordinance in reference to limitation of animals. Doesn't matter whether you have a homeowners association, they have a two-limit, but when some people take power, they over that, so we need some assistance legally. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you say you had the Fairfax County Code section?
I have everything.
Would you mind giving that to the clerk, so that we have that?
I gave him.
You already have it. Perfect. And I did receive your email today, along with several others.
Yeah.
So thank you for bringing this to our attention.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. Who else would like to come forward and speak on any item that's not listed as a public hearing item? Yes, ma'am.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, good evening. I'm Ann Veda, 631 Oak Street. Thanks to those of you who responded to the Pearl Street drainage email. I look forward to finally resolving that after 10 years. I regret that I'm unable to come on Saturday, but feel free, I'll share my opinion anytime. It's good to hear that you're addressing a code of conduct, but I think, A, it's, you know, a day late and a dollar short, but the other thing is, there are a wealth of tried and true code of conducts out there. Their delay is a serious issue. Let's get it done now. Every vote that is made prior to instating it and enforcing it is a vote that's in jeopardy, and that's a legal peril for you all, but also for every citizen in the town. You're putting us at risk. This doesn't need to be remanded to staff, this doesn't need a lot of work. Get it done, get it done now. And justice delayed is justice denied. Thanks.
Thank you. It is planned as an item of discussion at our next work session. Yes. Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else that would like to come forward on this, on any item that's not a public hearing item? Anyone else? Okay, thank you very much. That does bring us to our public hearings. The first one is Resolution 19G25 to Consider Special Exception Number 1901 at 767 Monroe Street to Increase the Number of Non-Resident Persons permitted in Home-Based Business During a 24-Hour Period. And applicant is Heather Kepshire, who's here this evening. So we'll open the public hearing and recognize Dave Stromberg, our zoning administrator for the staff report.
Good evening, Mayor Merkel, and members of the Town Council. So as mentioned, this is Special Exception Number 19-01, which is for the expansion of a home-based business at 767 Monroe Street. Home-based businesses are listed as an accessory use in the R10 Single Family Residential District. And home-based businesses are allowed by right as an accessory use, as long as you don't exceed a total of four non-resident persons at the residence in any 24-hour period.
Thank you very much. That does bring us to our public hearings. The first one is Resolution 19G25 to consider special exception number 1901 at 767 Monroe Street to increase the number of non-resident persons permitted in home-based business during a 24-hour period. And applicant is Heather Kepshire, who's here this evening. So we'll open the public hearing and recognize Dave Stromberg, our zoning administrator for the staff report.
Good evening, Mayor Merkel and members of the town council. So as mentioned, this is special exception number 19-01, which is for the expansion of a home-based business at 767 Monroe Street. Home-based businesses are listed as an accessory use in the R-10 Single Family Residential District. And home-based businesses are allowed by right as an accessory use as long as you don't exceed a total of four non-resident persons at the residence in any 24-hour period. And this does include any non-resident employees that you may have associated with the home-based business. So the applicant has applied for, been approved for, and operated a home-based business at this location since 2016, and the Community Development Department has never received any complaints at this address. So the ordinance does allow for some provisions of home-based businesses to be modified, but it does have to go through that special exception process. So the applicant is requesting to increase the total number of non-residents in a 24-hour period from four people up to seven people. So the property, as well as those immediately around it, are zoned R-10 and contain single-family residences. Further to the south on Monroe Street, you have the Central Commercial Zoning District and mostly office uses. Property, looking a little closer, is located near the intersection of Monroe Street and Madison Street, close to the downtown. And this lot was approved for development back in 2015. So the existing house is approximately 3,100 square feet, and the area used for the business is located in the basement of the structure, and that's approximately 720 square feet, which does comply with the area requirements of the ordinance. So as I said, the business is in the basement. Clients go around the house, and there's a staircase in the rear that the clients use to get into the business. And the applicant provides, typically provides services only for one client at a time and does not provide night or weekend appointments. Staff is also recommending a condition that would limit those hours to only be 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. on weekdays. So any change in those hours would require the applicant to come back for a new special So the property contains a parking area, which is capable of fitting up to three vehicles at one time. Access to that parking area is through an existing driveway located on the adjacent property, which is 765 Monroe Street. And there is an existing 15-foot by 38-foot ingress/egress easement over that portion of the driveway, and that's what grants the right for this property owner to access their property onto Monroe Street. And it isn't required, but the applicant has reached out to the current residents of 765 Monroe Street, and they provided a letter saying that they've never had any issues with the home-based business, and they have no objections to the business being expanded. And the applicant has also stated that many of her clients live right in the downtown, so a lot of them actually just walk there instead of actually driving there. So both staff and the planning commission are recommending approval of this application. Available for questions.
Okay. Thank you. Are there questions for Mr. Stromberg? Any questions? Ms. Friedrichs?
These are questions that you answered in the work session, but I just want to make sure that people are aware of, that we've actually asked them. One of my questions was, there's a shared driveway. If the property changes hands, if, if the, if 765 Monroe sells, will that be an issue for the business? Will they have to?
It will not be an issue for the business. If the current property owner at 767, where the business is, if that changes ownership if the applicant moves out, then any new person trying to start a business would need to get a new special exception.
Okay. And will there be any signage?
There will not be any signage.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions of staff? Yes, ma'am.
Do other home-based businesses have the prerogative of putting signs up outside their homes?
No. Home-based businesses are not allowed to have signage.
Thank you.
Mr. DeKalb?
I have a question. So she does business Monday to Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., right?
Correct.
Is that because we have a zoning ordinance that does not allow her to do business outside that time? Does she want to do Monday to Friday, 8 to 6, or she has to do that?
The ordinance would allow for greater hours than that if you were sticking with just the four non-residents per 24-hour period. The applicant only wants to use those hours, so part of that, in working with the applicant, that's how staff develop the conditions. So it allows the applicant to get the expansion of the total number of people, but it also provides a level of guarantee that even though there may be more people in a 24-hour period, it's not going to have any impact on the evenings and weekends when you're more likely to have other people actually at home. Most of the people in the neighborhood are gone at that time, because they would be at, those are during office hours.
Yeah, because, because I wanted to know that, we definitely support home-based business, so there might be other businesses as well. So I wanted to see, you know, how the ordinance work on that. And also the line of business he has, I was under the impression that he gets more business outside those 9 to 5, I believe, the clients, maybe the weekends more. So just wanted to make sure only. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions? Yes, sir.
Just a comment. Thank you for the information.
It's time for questions before the motions on the floor.
Has anything changed since the work session?
No, nothing has changed since.
Thank you. I still support it.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions of staff? All right. Thank you. Well, the applicant is here. Did you want to speak? You can, or you certainly don't have to?
Yes.
Okay, sure. And we may have a question for you. I'm not sure.
It's very similar to what I had said to the planning commission last month, which I think it's just important for the record. It's very nice that Herndon offers the chance to have a special exception as opposed to just kind of defaulting onto like Fairfax County. Because if that were the case, it would be a lot harder for me to make any adjustments whatsoever, and then I would have to reevaluate my whole business model and plan. So the sheer fact that you guys are able to do this was amazing. And so, that's all.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant?
No? No.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, so this, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to come forward and speak on this item? You have up to three minutes. State your name and address for the record. Anyone? Okay, seeing none, I'll close public hearing. Move to council level for discussion and action. Yes, sir? Anyone? Okay.
Madam Mayor, I move approval of Resolution 19-G25.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion to approve made by Ms. Friedrichs and seconded by Mr. Delagula. Discussion on the motion. Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to say that I'm very proud of this business, that, I know a number of people who go there. I didn't realize that. And I am proud that you add value to our community without damaging property values. So I appreciate it, and good luck with your business.
Thank you. Other discussion? Yes, sir?
And thank you for the feedback. We really want to make it easier for home-based businesses to thrive in Herndon. So if you do have any ideas on how we could streamline the process and make it easier, please let us know.
I agree. Other comments? Mr. DeKalb?
Thank you for your service, your business. We do appreciate home-based business in Herndon, and I think that's one of the ways to increase the, the income of our residents, because you can always run home-based business. So like Councilmember Delagula said, if there is anything we can do to help you with your home business, always do let us know. Thank you.
Thank you. And Madam Vice Mayor?
Yes. Wanted to thank staff for the excellent presentation they did at our work session and answering all of our questions while we were there, so, and good luck.
Yes, I concur, and I know we were all worried about our hair tonight, so we're, hopefully, hopefully, some, well, sorry. I'm getting some glares from around the dais. Sorry, guys. Anyway, thank you. We're excited. I know you're a thriving business, and who wants to work on nights and weekends? I totally get it. So thank you for that. If that, no further comments, I'll call the question. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And those opposed? And that motion carries unanimously. Congratulations. Next up is ordinance 19003 to consider a ZODA number 1806 to amend Chapter 78 zoning, Article 5, sections, there's several of them listed here, I won't go through them, to make some housekeeping changes for internal consistency in our zoning code. And once again, I'll call Mr. Stromberg for the staff report.
All right.
And open the public hearing. Sorry. That's important.
Moving on to ZODA number 18-06. And this is, again, part of our ongoing process to correct errors and eliminate out-of-date provisions in the zoning ordinance. I will be bringing these to you from time to time. And I'm going to run through three of these changes tonight. So the first one is Section 78-50.7, which is the Plan Development Traditional Downtown Zoning District. And this is simply fixing a mistake in the ordinance. And the sentence deals with floor-area ratio, and that's one method that localities use to regulate density. It's one that Herndon uses in a number of its zoning districts. However, PD-TD is not one of those zoning districts. And the errant language says that applicants must go before the Heritage Preservation Review Board in order to get any type of increased floor-area ratio. Again, the problem is, you can't get increased floor-area ratio, and every project in PD-TD has to go before the HPRV anyway. So we're proposing to clean up that section. The next section is 78-71.6, which is the eating establishments use category. This is in Article 7, which describes all the different characteristics of the various use groups that we have listed in our zoning ordinance. And we're looking specifically at eating establishments with outdoor seating areas. So this contains a portion of a sentence that should have gotten deleted in a previous text amendment, so we're just going back and cleaning that up. So previously, the zoning ordinance did not have standards for small outdoor seating areas, and then larger outdoor seating areas had to go through the special exception process. In 2013, standards were developed for all outdoor seating areas regardless of the side. And in addition to that, any areas with more than 32 seats outside, they have to provide additional parking. But the way that the phrase "outdoor seating areas with 25 seats or fewer" is in there, it may be interpreted that the ordinance is actually prohibiting anything larger than that, which is certainly not a goal. So we went through, found the rest of those, and are striking them out. And then lastly, I will go over 78-110.2. This is the planting standards for landscaping. And this is in Article 11, which has the standards for all development and redevelopment throughout the town. And this section's being changed because it just doesn't accurately reflect what we do in practice anymore. So all development or redevelopment has to submit a site plan, and as part of that site plan, they have a landscape plan, and staff reviews that to make sure that there is not any invasive species on existing or proposed. And when we approve that plan, we make sure that it's actually all the approved materials. And in the past, to actually verify compliance in the field with that, we used to do a zoning inspection permit. Currently, we just either tie it to the required bonding that's associated with the site plan, or we tie it to the issuance of an occupancy permit. If we withhold that, it's pretty strong motivation for a developer to get in compliance with their plan. So we're just updating the ordinance to reflect that change. So both staff and the planning commission are recommending approval of this ZODA. And the question came up at the work session from Councilwoman Friedrichs, and this also came up during the planning commission. You can go to the Community Forestry section of the Community Development webpage, and there is an actual list. Anyone can go, pull that up, print it out, and you can see exactly what species it has, biological name, and the common name of what's invasive or not in Virginia.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Stromberg? Ms. Friedrichs?
So I just want to make sure I understand, what you're proposing here is to remove redundant language, and there's no actual change in what process anyone's going through?
Correct.
Thank you.
Other questions for staff? Okay. Thank you very much. This is a public hearing, so once again, I'll call for comments from the audience. Same rules as before, up to three minutes. State your name and address for the record. Is there anyone that would like to come forward and speak on this item? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Move to council level for discussion and action.
Madam Mayor, I move approval of ordinance 190-03.
I'll second.
Okay. We have a motion to approve made by the vice mayor, seconded by Mr. McKenna. Discussion on the motion.
Thank staff again for their excellent job of presenting and answering all of our questions in the work session. And if anyone in town, in your private home, in your garden, wants to make sure you're not putting out invasive plants, check out those things on the website. Also, Friends of Runny Mead Park is an excellent resource. They have a lot of folks that know about invasive plants, because they're constantly pulling those out of Runny Mead. Because even if you live two miles away from Runny Mead Park, if they're in your yard, the birds will pick them up and drop off little pieces, and then they will start growing there out of control. So we do have excellent resources with our staff for homeowners, as well as our businesses. Take advantage.
Thank you. Further discussion? Mr. McKenna?
Just want to thank staff for helping us out with redundancy, because as you know, rules and regulations can be unruly at times, and making sure that we're efficient makes it easier for everyone else to see what we're doing. So truly appreciate it.
Thank you. Further discussion? Yep. All right. I will call the question. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And those opposed, that motion carries. Our next ordinance is 19004 to consider a third franchise amendment to, to Program Executive Office Enterprise Information Systems Project Manager Defense Communications and Army Transmission Systems Technology Applications Office, formerly the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers for the abandonment of existing routes resulting in town ownership and control of this conduit, the addition of a new route, and the adjustment of franchise fees. I will open the public hearing and recognize our town attorney to outline the bid process. Madam Town Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor. This will be relatively short. The Army Corps, for a shortened name, currently has the franchise. They are simply asking for an amendment thereto. They are still required to submit a, are we still required to solicit bids? I do believe, as we begin, you will, you will ask if we have received any bids. Ms. Chastain is prepared to respond. Once we've presented the staff report and heard from the applicant, then this is a roll call vote, and that's the process. That's pretty much it.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. So are there any questions on the process from council? Okay. Thank you. We have received one bid from the Program Executive Office Enterprise Information Systems Project Manager Defense Communications and Army Transmission Systems Technology Applications Office. Anybody want to try to repeat that? Ms. Chastain, have we received any additional bids?
No, ma'am.
Okay. So hearing none, I will close the bidding process. And this is a public hearing, so, Ms. Chastain, do you have anything, or do we need to just call down the applicant?
No. I was just going to mention what it is.
Okay. Well, tell us.
Yeah, that's all it is, is basically, they're abandoning conduit along Van Buren Street and Spring Street to, basically for the new projects that are coming through, for our project and the VDOT project in Spring Street. So that's essentially what this is doing for us.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you. This is a public hearing, so I will invite the applicant or the applicant's agents to come forward, I know they're here this evening, to address the council, anything you'd like us to know about this. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. How are you? I'm hoping to make your life a little bit easier, and our relationship hopefully a little bit easier, and save you a lot of time instead of saying that very lengthy name.
[laughing]
Just a minor point of clarification, United States Army Corps of Engineers is a separate organization than ours. And then we, that long, arduous thing that you see, is our organizational structure above us inside the U.S. Army. So we just shortened that to either be the United States Army Technology Applications Office, or the abbreviation thereof, which is TAO. So hopefully that'll make your life a little bit easier. So hopefully that'll make your life a little bit easier. But I want to subject myself to any questions you may have for me.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Are there any questions for the applicant? Okay. Well, we're trying to make your life easy, too, apparently.
My apologies, I should have introduced myself.
Oh, sorry.
My name is Dan Underwood, from TAO.
TAO, in a few minutes from TAO, right?
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. So this is a public hearing, so once again, I'll call on comments from the audience. Is there anyone that would like to come forward and speak on this item? Okay. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and move to council level for discussion and action. Ms. Vice Mayor?
Madam Mayor, I move approval of ordinance 19-0-04.
I'll second.
Discussion on the motion. Anyone?
I think staff was responsible for Exhibit A. Did you put Exhibit A together?
The map?
That was the map. Excellent map.
Yes.
I thought that was great. It was so easy to look at and see what we were talking about.
Very clear.
So thank you very much. So anybody in the audience, you can pick up a copy of that outside if you don't have one already. Thank you.
Other discussion? Nope. Okay, so this does recall, or require a roll call vote, so I will ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Thank you, Mayor Merkel. Councilmember DeGala?
Yes.
Councilmember DeCall?
Yes.
Councilmember Friedrichs?
Yes.
Councilmember McKenna?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Olum?
Yes.
Mayor Merkel?
Yes. That motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. And finally, we have reached Resolution 19G-26, to consider comprehensive plan amendment number 1802, to amend the town's 2030 comprehensive plan to establish a design concept for street improvements on South Eldon Street between Sterling Road and the Herndon Parkway, and incorporate by reference the design concept from our consultants. I will open the public hearing. We have received some comments from the public on this, which have been entered into the record, and I'll recognize Michael Wallach for the staff report.
All right. Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of town council. Yes, so tonight, we're here to discuss CPA 1802, establish a design concept for street improvements on Eldon Street between Sterling Road and Herndon Parkway. So the project area is Eldon Street between Herndon Parkway and Sterling Road. Herndon Parkway is located here on the left side of the screen, and Sterling Road is located here on the right side of the screen. Also includes the intersection of Eldon Street and Alabama Drive. So in 2017, the town applied for and was awarded a $65,000 grant from the State's Office of Intermodal Planning and Investment. And the main reason we did this was to study transportation needs associated with potential changes of land uses along this stretch of Eldon Street. And also an opportunity to prepare for and implement a multimodal design along this corridor. There was a grant oversight committee that was comprised of Signee Friedrichs from town council, Michael Romeo on planning commission, and town staff, and a traffic consultant. And the committee held a number of meetings in 2018 and developed a concept plan for this corridor. So town council initiated a resolution at its November 13, 2018, public hearing to authorize public hearings on this item. And the Planning Commission approved a resolution recommending adoption of CPA 1802 at its January 28, 2019, public hearing. And the resolution recommends an amendment to the Transportation Chapter of the Comprehensive Plan, page 9-8, projects listed to achieve the proposed major street network with a planning horizon of 2030. And under terms of the grant, the town must adopt the grant-funded roadway concept by October 1, 2019, or repay those grant funds back to the state. And I'll read off the proposed comprehensive plan language. "South Eldon Street, town minor arterial, Herndon Parkway to Sterling Road, add a shared use path of eight feet in width, and improve the existing five-lane section to be a four-lane section with 11-foot wide travel lanes and a raised median and protected turning lanes. To increase visibility and safety to pedestrian crossings, enhanced crosswalks would be added at the intersections of Eldon Street and Alabama Drive, the intersection at Dulles Park Shopping Center, and the intersection of Eldon Street at Sterling Road. The eight-foot wide shared use path is to be located on the western side of Eldon Street and is to run from Sterling Road to Herndon Parkway." So this next half of the presentation, we'll get into the proposed concept plan that the grant oversight committee came up with. The proposed improvements are shown at the top of the screen. The existing condition is at the bottom. And notes on the proposed improvements are on the lower left-hand side of the screen. So I'll run through this first section here. It is the area of Eldon Street and Herndon Parkway. And the notes that are on the lower left-hand side here, I'll go through them one by one. The first one here is reducing the length of the pedestrian crossing and making it perpendicular to the direction of the street. Adding a pedestrian refuge area in the median of the crosswalk. Adding bus stop shelters at existing bus stops. Adding a raised median to reduce conflicting traffic movements. And widening the existing five-foot sidewalk to an eight-foot shared use path to allow for better sharing by pedestrians and bicyclists. And also updating all crosswalks, ramps, and pedestrian signals for ADA compliance. So the concept plan does propose to close off some driveway curb cuts and consolidate others. And what this does is reduce the number of conflict points along this stretch of Eldon Street, and should make the street safer for both pedestrians and motorists as well. So the concept plan includes closing off the driveway curb cut at 1100 Herndon Parkway. So this is near the Bank of America and the Chipotle, and is the closest driveway curb cut to the intersection of Herndon Parkway and Eldon Street, and is represented by number four on the concept plan. And this is, we're discussing the west side of the street for this part. The concept plan also includes consolidating and reconfiguring the driveway at Sovereign Limited, so this is the Starbucks and the adjacent Verizon. Today, there are two separate driveway curb cuts here, and the committee saw an opportunity to consolidate here. The two driveway curb cuts are only about 25 feet apart, so this would still allow access for both of these businesses. And this is represented by number five on the west side of Eldon Street. And then on the other side of the street here, the concept plan includes consolidating and reconfiguring the driveway at Amphora and the driveway at 950 Herndon Parkway, which is a PNC bank. And this is, again, only about, currently, today, the two driveway curb cuts are only about 25 feet apart, and it was an opportunity that the committee saw to consolidate these two entrances. Left turns would still be allowed into the site, and right turns would be allowed out of the site there. I will say one thing, too. The consolidation can only work if the two property owners agree to such a thing. This is not something that the town or VDOT can go in, and, you know, there would need to be an agreement in place. So this next slide here shows the area of Eldon Street and Alabama Drive. And the proposed improvements include much of what I've previously listed off here, going from a five-foot sidewalk to an eight-foot shared use path, kind of reconfiguring the crosswalks at the intersection, making them more visible, and making sure that ramps, crosswalks, pedestrian signals are compliant with ADA. And here, the committee felt like we would close off one of the driveway curb cuts to the Gulf Gas Station. There's currently two there, and the one that is closest to the intersection, the committee felt like it was an appropriate place to close off the driveway curb cut. And that is represented by number three on the concept plan here. So this next slide here is the area of Eldon Street near the Dulles Park Shopping Center. And as noted in the staff report, the project calls for what would be a new intersection here at Dulles Park Shopping Center, and this is in front of the McDonald's and the Pizza Hut on the other side. And the reason the committee came up with this design right here is the committee felt like there's a need for a safe pedestrian crossing in this vicinity, particularly because it's so close to Herndon Middle School. And today, kids have a need to cross Eldon Street in this vicinity. And as noted in the staff report, there's two separate initiatives that the committee felt will need to take place here related to this project. The first one would be signalization of this, what will be a new intersection here. The town asked VDOT to, you know, get some warrants for a new signal at this location. VDOT came back and said that it's not warranted here today, and likely someday it could be. The other separate project related to this that the committee felt like would be good would be to improve the sidewalk on the east side of Eldon Street. All of the improvements are on the west side of the street, because that's where we have a lot more room to work with, there's a lot more right-of-way. And the east side, there's just not enough space there. So the committee felt like if even, if this sidewalk could just be touched up, repaved, then that would be a good effort to make the street look a little bit nicer. And again, the proposed improvements include much of the same as you're going along the street here. As represented by number one on the concept plan, the committee proposes to close off one of the curb cuts in front of Guapo's. And the reason for this is, and what's noted in the concept plan, is this right turn lane could actually be pulled back, extended back, and since you now have a new signalized intersection here, there's more traffic movements in and out of the site. And this is the last slide here. This is the area of Eldon Street and Sterling Road. And the proposed improvements, again, are including much of the same, making the crosswalks more visible, and, you know, going from a five-foot sidewalk to an eight-foot shared use path, and making sure that the crosswalks are also ADA compliant. And so with that, I can take any questions from council.
Thank you. What questions do you have for council, or for staff? Ms. Friedrichs?
So, Mr. Wallach, the purpose of this plan is to improve pedestrian and auto safety?
Yes, it is. With a specific focus on pedestrians and cyclists along this corridor, yes.
And I guess if the cuts that we're planning to make in entrances and exits from Eldon Street are rejected by the owners, is that going to affect our, the funding for the plan from VDOT?
It could, but it would depend on a number of metrics from VDOT. And it's very likely we wouldn't know that at this stage until you get a concept plan that's a little bit more concrete.
Thank you. Other questions for staff? Yes, ma'am.
I was just wondering, had you started speaking with some of the business owners at this point?
We haven't yet, and that's because it's early in the process. But what we're currently trying to do is fulfill the grant that we've got. We are on kind of a tight timeline with that.
Thank you. Thank you. Other questions for staff? Okay. Thank you, sir. So this is a public hearing, so once again, I'll call for comments from the audience. Is there anyone that would like to come forward and speak on this item?
Still Ambeda, still 631 Oak Street. Madam Mayor, members of the council, it sounds like we're reducing the number of vehicle lanes. Am I missing something? We're going from five lanes to four?
The five lanes includes what's currently, what's informally referred to as a suicide lane, where you can make a left turn. It includes that. So it's going from that...
So you're eliminating the suicide lane?
It would go from that to a raised median.
Yeah, that's eliminating a lane of traffic. Okay, so I think this...
We welcome your comments.
Correct. I understand that. So what I'd like to see is the traffic study involved in reducing, whether we call it suicide or not, it is containing vehicles, and we're reducing the vehicular space, which at some times of day is an issue. So exercise caution, and let's do our due diligence. I see the widening and prominence of the pedestrian markings as a good thing, as an affirmative directing of pedestrians, but as sort of a, I don't want to call it a negative, but as a further encouragement. Other municipalities have put fencing in the raised median. It can be ornamental, it doesn't have to, it can be very attractive. But I've seen, like in Arlington, they have just little three- and four-foot ornamental ironwork. It's very attractive, and it does help people from, as prominent and attractive as the pedestrian walkways are, a beeline is also very attractive. And so encouraging pedestrians to funnel themselves to safe places is a good thing. And since we've got some funding, what the heck. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to come forward and speak on this item? Yes, ma'am. State your name and address for the record, please.
Danielle Scherf, 710 Hemlock Court. And it's just a question. I'm really excited to see this. This is my neighborhood, and there are lots of people walking and using those streets right now when they're not so wonderful. So it's terrific to see this being talked about and turned into something real. My question is, if we're putting in bus shelters, which is terrific, are we also talking about streetlights and trash cans and the things that people actually on their feet are going to need to make this usable and tidy for the town going forward?
Yeah, thank you.
I think the streetlights is something we would need to discuss further, but trash cans and the sort of bus shelter amenities would all be provided, yes.
No, he doesn't. Okay, thank you. This is a time for comments from the audience, not generally question and answer. So is there anyone else who would like to come forward to comment on this item? Anyone? Okay, thank you very much. So I will move to council level for discussion and action. Y'all are so shy tonight. Ms. Friedrichs?
Madam Mayor, I move approval of Resolution 19-G-26.
Second. All right, we have a motion to approve made by, pardon me, Ms. Friedrichs, seconded by the Vice Mayor. Discussion on the motion. Yes, ma'am. Okay, is it on or not?
I'm always backwards on this. I'm always backwards on this. So as Mr. Wallach mentioned, I had the opportunity of working with him, with staff, and with Commissioner Romeo on this, and even Commissioner Bouchard stepped in. And I think we had a robust conversation discussing safety, which was our chief concern, smooth flow of traffic, making sure that pedestrian and bicycle walkways were attractive and easy to use. I know there are always issues that can come up, but we paid a lot of attention to density and just generally making sure that this part of Eldon Street, which has been not neglected, but hasn't really been the focus for quite a while, got some dedicated attention. I appreciated the comments that we heard from the audience, and wanted to emphasize that this is not something we're expecting to happen tomorrow. It's a long-term plan. 2030 was mentioned, which is at least 10 years away, I'm pretty sure. So we'll have time to adapt the plan and to adapt as things change. But as it stands, I'm really excited that we're going to take some much-needed efforts to fix safety and appearance and traffic flow. So thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? Madam Vice Mayor?
Yes. I, too, am excited about this. I know there have been other projects in the works over the years I've been here. Fortunately, we have some excellent staff that knows how to go out and find grants to help us pay for these things. And sometimes it takes a while to piece those things together, and it's amazing where they can go out and find those funds. But I, too, am looking forward to not being on the suicide lane, because I have a very small car, and when I see a truck or an SUV, I just don't want to go there. It's kind of hard to get into the McDonald's from where I'm coming from. Thank you.
Thank you. Other discussion? Mr. DeCall, followed by Mr. DeGale.
Thank you. It's for the pedestrian safety, so thank you for putting this presentation. However, I do have few comments and concerns regarding this. First thing is, in the Slide 6, the item number two, there is... First thing is, in the slide six, the item number two, there is a refuse area in the middle of the Jibra Crossing, you know, the pedestrian crossing. I don't know how that works, because my understanding says people will be distracted. And another thing is, when we are actually picking up the refuse, that may also, you know, hinder the traffic flow over there. So I don't know how that plays, putting that, you know, refuse in the middle of the road, rather than putting on the side, first thing. Second thing is, if you, and that one is on slide eight as well. And the second thing is on slide, I believe it's eight, you know, is that the one that has the entrance to Fresh World? Is that correct?
I believe so. Guapos is there, CVS, yeah.
Okay. So that one, especially coming out of Fresh World and making left, has always been really difficult for me. And a lot of times, you know, when the traffic is moving both sides, even though I have to take a left and go home, I have taken right and went all the way to Alabama, or sometimes even Hernan Parkway. So that one is a little difficult, it's a little dangerous over there to make a left. So, does this plan take care of that issue? Because I have had close calls many times, making left from Fresh World to Eldon Street. So does this plan take care of that issue? I mean, I'm sorry, it's not a question, comments, but it has to take care of this issue, our plan?
It would. The committee wants this to be a signalized intersection with a left turn lane out of there.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Daigle?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just, we talked about this at the work session, but slide six, item number five. The more I thought about it, and I drove over there, I'd like to see that little pork chop thing very prominent, because you do have people that just dart across and ignore the whole go-right thing. You know, the more I think about it, just for safety, think...
Is that at number five?
Yeah, I think item number five. Think of forward, right? I mean, there's going to be more traffic, more pedestrian flow, more cyclists, everything, which is another reason I do like the idea of what Ann brought up in terms of that raised sort of fencing, something to direct people to prevent that A to B walk, because it's easier for people, and they do it all the time. It's just a matter of time before there's a big-time accident there. So I'd like to see that incorporated, you know, maybe it's a budget discussion at a later time, but absolutely, I'd like to see those things put in there.
Thank you. Further discussion? This is an exciting time, I know this is the first step in getting, we've got to secure the funding so we can get into the nitty-gritty with trashcans and raised medians and all that sort of thing. But, you know, as metro station opens, this does need to be a more walkable, friendly area, and right now, it doesn't feel like a place you want to walk, but this is going to start that path, and the South Eldon Street plan that we approved, the first step on that, I think will also play into that. So thank you. There's no further discussion? I will call the question on the motion. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? And those opposed? That motion carries, and we have one item on the consent agenda, which is reappointing members to the pedestrian and bicycle advisory committee. Yes, ma'am?
Madam Mayor, I move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? And those opposed? That motion carries, and this concludes our agenda this evening.
Madam Mayor, seeing no other business, I move we adjourn.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
And those opposed? We stand adjourned at 8:13 PM.
Oh my gosh, wow.